United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To call a meeting to order? That's who you call and vote to?
Do you have it all for members of attendance this evening?
Thank you. First item is approval of our agenda. The motion to approve the agenda is presented to the seat. So move. Thank you, Alan. The second please. Second. Thank you. In all favor say aye. Next item we have is our good news report. What do we have? We have one action item from closed session. Add is to approve the closed meeting minutes, the closed session minutes for September twenty-third. One more.
Great job.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Okay, Mr. Green.
Good evening. As you can see, we've had a lot to celebrate at the middle school this fall. We have our first place in state girls cross-country team, our second place in state boys cross-country team, and our third place in state boys baseball team here tonight. First, I'd like to introduce Coach John Hummel. He is our head baseball coach and his first year coaching here at the middle school. And he's going to talk about and introduce our baseball team.
All right, thank you. First, thanks to Principal Cox and especially Mr. Green for all of this support. This being, as you said, my first year coaching. So, in our little state run, we first scored our opponent thirty-three to one, so we got out of a roll. The state quarterfinals, we beat Parkside five-four in extra innings. It was a pretty dramatic game. We're in the Saturday in the semifinal, we lost to the eventual state champion, Morton, three to two. Pretty dramatic game as well. But I came back a couple hours later to beat Mohammed Seymour eleven to six. So, we had a great group of kids, all worked hard. And so, I guess at this time, I'd like to recognize them and hand them all out their certificates of achievement. Grant Bender.
Come around this way.
Jacob Maton. Grayden Parrish. Carson Avern. Daniel Benaitis. Logan Cody. Landon Council. Ben Harte. Ryan Hemro. Grant Johnson. Mason McIntosh. Eric Morris. Ben Schmidt. Alex Dory. Dalton Westworth. Trey Westworth. Bradley Weewell. Jacob Ryan. And I did not see Connor Vales or Kenan Doherty. They were all still.
Nivo's panoramic camera. For cameras.
Jules is zooming in on us.
You can't come that tall. Okay?
All right. Good job, guys. No, you don't have to say.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah. Congrats.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you. All right, I'll keep going. Next, I'd like to introduce one of our assistant cross-country coaches, Tracy Talus. There's still one name for our head coach, Ryan Staley, who is out sick right now. She's going to talk about both our boys and girls cross-country.
Again, thank you to Ryan Green for all the support for our cross-country team. Without that, we would be lost. And just to say a few things for Coach Staley, I want to be here, but he is ill. I'll start off by saying that both the boys and girls cross-country teams had outstanding seasons. And it was capped off by the girls finishing as state champs and the boys second or runner-up. The girls never lost a meet all year long. And that's now two consecutive years where that's been the case. And when you stop and think about that, that's pretty remarkable because that's a great record. Boys, the boys were equally as impressive in our eyes due to the fact that they had, well, we had a lot of question marks thinking about who's going to fill in and who's going to kind of move up after last year when we took second next state. So, we had a lot of holes to fill. But we had a lot of kids step up and they did a great job all year. And just a little personal note, you know, we coaches, we just love what we do and we love these kids so much. It's just a joy working with y'all. So, thank you guys for helping us to have a great year. And now, we just would like to introduce the kids, starting off with the boys, who took second place at state. Deck Hardin. Will Conlin. Loueira. Chris Durr. Nathan Maton. Jay Flaw. Logan Katz. Carter Lynch. Greg Maton. And Colin Kramer. All right, and for our girls, we'll start out, I have two certificates for this child. She was our 2012 individual state cross-country champion for Glenwood Middle School. That's also a first for Glenwood. So, anywhere. Demi Dixon. Alexandria Smith. Katie Held. Donna Hanson. Katie Julin. Charlie Smith. Marissa Rios. And last but not least, Lily Becker. And the other three that were unable to attend tonight, Rachel Mays, Josie Preski, and Toby Giganti.
Great job.
Great job. Congratulations.
Sorry, and I do, sorry, need to, you need a speech. I need to mention all of the coaches and the other two that are here. Of course, longstanding, longtime head coach is Susan Artler and Mark Kuhn. Assistant Coach Greg Bennett could not be here as well tonight.
What I wanted to quickly say is that Tracy was trying to help here for Ryan, but Tracy and Greg are our volunteer assistant coaches, have been with us forever in track and cross-country. And I know, and Mark knows, and Ryan, that these kids would not be as successful as they are if they went out running with them year-round. They've run with Demi since she was five, is that right? Five or six years old? And they do the run at the track program, not only for our kids from the time cross-country is open, from track starts and then track to cross-country, but also for the community. So, they put in a lot of volunteer hours and we know we can't have a better volunteer than you, and a person who works at the runs. I just want to thank them publicly because they are awesome. We have a lot of fun.
All done?
Thank you, guys. Great job.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for coming. Hey, guys.
Congratulations.
Thanks for coming. Good job, Lily. Hi, Lou.
Yeah, one of those friends said, "I don't know. I don't know if I want to make first in the picture." It was a little random. I said, "I don't know if I want to make first in the picture." You guys should have heard it. Well, your manning took over.
That's right. I didn't think we had this much.
She might be.
This is the group that's going to the team.
Oh, yeah. For Patty. Oh, not, right, it's next.
Okay. Next on our good news reports is our School Search Bright Star and Bright A-plus awards. Carrie?
We're proud, you know, of the district's achievements. We continue to, Betsy, oh, thank you. We continue to perform very well and are honored with the School Search 2012 Bright Star Award and one of only fifty-nine school districts, Illinois school districts, out of eight-hundred-sixty-eight to be honored with the Bright A-plus Star Award. So, we're thrilled with, you know, our continued high achievement and, you know, careful reserve or careful funding. And we're, you know, always cautious of that. So, it's a real honor to get this award.
Can I mention something on that?
Absolutely.
In just looking up on their website, Walt Chatham is one of, they're the only one in Sangamon County. And we are one of six districts downstate outside of late, outside of the six county metropolitan Chicago area that got this award. So, we can, I think we should be very proud of what we do. And since I've been involved in, in school board work for the last almost, well, it's getting close to twenty years now, we have always been on the Bright Star Award, but this is the first time, I think, we've got the A-plus award.
Right. And we're one of only eleven school districts in the state to receive both. So, it's quite an honor.
Yeah, I wanted to ask, the A-plus award is new. I wanted to ask exactly what, what is the difference between the two?
Betsy, if you'll pull it up.
Absolutely.
Well, Bright Star is a, it's a funding issue. Funding versus district achievement, where the Bright Star, or the Bright A-plus Award looks at the student academic performance and it's the top five percent of schools in the state for the A-plus award.
So, there it shows, yeah.
Was that what, okay.
Yeah.
So, it's, I don't know that it's new, John, but it's the first time we've been there.
No, it's the first time we've won. I was just wondering, is it an extra level?
It is an extra level, yes.
There are a lot of people who have gone in to make that award possible.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. It's a district-wide award. It's not.
All the adults in the district? Students in our district?
Absolutely.
Okay. Let's see. Chatham Chamber?
The next item is, the Chatham Chamber of Commerce voted unanimously to support the no-tax increase bond referendum. And this is a press release that they provided and are very supportive of, they continue to be very supportive of the school district, but this is yet another way that they show their support for the school district. So, that's the press release that was announced by the Chatham Chamber of Commerce. They feel very strongly that, when they voted unanimously to support, they felt very strongly that, you know, community members and their clients and their customers moved to the Chatham area because of our strong school system. And they felt like as a chamber, they want to continue to support the school system. And so, they unanimously support, you know, voted to support the referendum.
Okay. That's it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Next item we have is an opportunity for visitors to address the school board concerning any agenda topic. Does anybody wishes to address the board this evening on anything that's on the agenda? If not, we will go on to our consent agenda. Number six, our consent agenda. Is there anybody that wishes to pull anything off our consent agenda, items six-one through six-eight for individual consideration? If not, I need a motion then to approve our consent agenda, six-one through six-eight as presented in your board packet tonight. Thank you, Steve. And a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Alan. Betsy, call the roll, please.
Harley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Musis?
Yes. Next item we have is our personnel consent agenda items. Is there anyone who wishes to pull any of those off, seven-one through seven-twenty-three for individual, individual item? Need a motion then to approve our personnel consent agenda items, seven-one through seven-twenty-three as presented this evening? Thank you, John. And a second, please?
I said.
Linda, thank you. And Betsy, call the roll, please.
Carter?
Yes.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Musis?
Yes. All right, on to old business. This is the eight-one is an IASB, which is the Illinois Association of School Boards' Resolution Committee to approve a waiver for show choir. And I'm going to let Lisa, who has been spearheading this for us, to explain it and what we need to do this evening, then we'll go into the resolution.
If you'll recall, in the spring, I had drafted with the help of Ben Schwarm, a resolution to be sent to the Resolutions Committee of the IASB, language asking the Resolutions Committee to approve the addition onto the legislative agenda for the IASB of a permanent waiver to be added in school code, much like marching band is accepted from GE. And our board approved that, we sent it to the Resolutions Committee, and much to Ben Schwarm's surprise, he blames it on being the very, or and ours, being the, he blames it on being the first item on the agenda, the Resolutions Committee felt that the existing waiver process, those who seem to be paying attention anyway, was sufficient. I've appealed that decision and will be speaking with your approval to the Resolutions Committee at the Triple I Conference Friday morning, November seventeen. And along with certainly two other school districts have passed, their boards have passed an agreement to join us in that discussion, Wheaton-Warnville and Crete-Wnee. We probably have a few more joining us. The first step will be to approach the Resolutions Committee and ask them to take a new vote on that. And the second step would be to appeal to the entire Delegates Assembly, which every school district is, you know, Linda has represented us in the past, is here, I'm going to represent us, and the Dell, and to speak to the entire Delegate Assembly if the Resolutions Committee doesn't change their mind and ask the Delegate Assembly to approve this. And what I'm asking tonight is permission to do that.
Actually, that meeting is on the sixteenth and then the full delegation is on.
Saturday is seventeen?
Yes. My mistake. So, any questions, comments? I have a resolution then that we need to pass. Now, we'll read that. I don't know if you've got that. There it is.
We've already approved this resolution.
Oh, did you approve it at that?
This is a resolution our board approved last spring.
Okay.
What I'm asking tonight is, you know what? I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
That the Walt Chatham Board of Education allow me to, to complete the appeal process by petitioning the Resolutions Committee and the Delegate Assembly to approve our resolution.
I saw Lou that we authorized Resolutions Committee to do that.
She would such as.
Send me a second. I'll third.
Do we have a second? Okay.
Give a second, yeah.
And any other questions or comments? Betsy, call the roll, please.
Peter Meyer?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Cap?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Yes. Go get them. And we have gotten some support already from a variety of school districts to, that are backing this resolution also.
A few more verbal commitments, maybe.
And I spoke to the president of Wheaton-Warnville this morning.
Good. All right. Then we have, the next item is our Action Team Seventy report.
Perfect timing.
I just saw one member of the team walk out.
Perfect timing.
Yeah.
We'd like to welcome Dr. Kimi Saraf. She, yeah, if you don't mind, so they can touch on the mic.
Action Team Seventy is our referendum task force.
Well, I left my eleven-year-old in charge of the house. I sort of drove as fast as I can and I would drive home as quickly as possible, too. Things are going extremely well. We have done a considerable amount of outreach into the community. I think the most important, latest development, the Chatham Chamber, voting unanimously to support this referendum. I think that was a huge source of support from our business community. So, that's very, very good. We have several different types of social media up and running, trying to keep voters informed. We are about to launch a phone campaign. We're going to be calling folks, letting them know about the referendum. We do need help with that. So, anyone who knows anyone, who can, you know, take a sheet and make fifty phone calls or a hundred phone calls, we would really appreciate that. We've got a script already written, so it's very, very simple and straightforward, but it's going to help us tally where the voters are. And it's going to remind us to call those voters on election day and say they want to support it, so that we can make sure that they actually made it to the poll. The other thing we're really trying to remind our constituents about is go all the way through. We're a little concerned about ballot fatigue. In fact, I talked to a father this morning who told me point-blank that he only votes the first couple of ticket items and then he can't be wasting time with the stuff at the back. So, I reminded him that the stuff at the back is the most important to our local community.
Start from the bottom up.
I don't care what else you do, but start on the last page first, please. So, that's another thing to remind everyone about. There's a podcast now that's on our Facebook page. The Reverend and I did that over the weekend. It was a twenty-five-minute podcast. It went out on all of the Capital Radio Group stations twice over the weekend, and it's still available for anyone who wants to hear it. So, if you have someone who's not familiar with the issue, tune them into that. They can go to CapitalRadioGroup.com and look at what their podcasts are. We're at the top of the list and we'll stay there for a full week. So, that was a really nice piece. We also did a nice television piece that, I think, did it air on Sunday?
Twenty-sixth.
Yeah, on the twenty-sixth. That's right. Thank you. It's going to air on the twenty-sixth. And that was a nice, multiple interviews and some of us out in the community knocking on doors. That's sort of where we stand. The last thing is, we do need more funds in the door. I mean, I'm just going to put that out there. We really would like to do one mass mailing. We have, all of us have skin in the game. We've all made our donations. Some of us have made a couple of donations. And so, we need to really encourage the community that they're looking for ways to help support this. At this point in time, we need, you know, boots on the ground and we need money in the copper so that we can get that mailing done and have it paid for upfront. In terms of pushback, we haven't received much. I think that we did a very, very good job in the early days of addressing those citizens we felt would show concern about it. And they have either come out in support or just remained silent. So, what we're hearing, I think the whole team is hearing mostly positive. A question here or there, but not deal breakers, just, well, I wonder about this. We still get the occasional question about, are you building a pool with this money? The answer, so, that's where we stand right now. Are there any questions I can answer for you?
Thank you.
We're hard at work. I'm very nervous about November sixth. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay. Next, we have number nine, our instructional and special education update.
All right. Well, we've had a lot of good news tonight, and I figured I'd just keep it going with some more good news instructionally. Two weeks ago, I had the opportunity to present to our new teachers. And at that time, as I was preparing them for parent-teacher conferences, I left them with a challenge. For the year, I challenged them to make sure that they are a person who is unforgettable, that they are that teacher that has such a positive impact on kids that for the rest of their lives, those kids remember that teacher. In order to do that, we have to build relationships with students, but also with families. And Linda, I know you taught me that a long time ago when you were a school over at law with how important engaging that family into our community and what an impact that has on student performance. So, we have, are very fortunate that we have a group called Chatham Area Protect, and it was founded four years ago by Becky Warren Rankin. And I kind of reflected after that meeting and tapped into them and I sat down with Becky and said, "We need to do, we need to do more. We need to help our families. We need to communicate with them. We need to build that team." So, we decided that together, we were going to co-host a series of events to bring our families in and educate them, give them the support that they need, and allow them opportunities to network with other families who have disability, who have students with disabilities. So, the first thing we did was we decided to have kind of like a playgroup because some of our students don't have peers that they can actually engage with. So, Deb Gosrow and Missy Willey, in fact, is taking over this portion and beginning November twenty-eighth from five to seven-thirty, don't know where yet because I'm still trying to figure out the whole live-day gym schedule. We are going to be hosting a series of events where they're going to start with a playgroup. And the first part, we're really going to tap into our younger families, those ones that are new to this school district, to kind of help them through the process, explain how things work, help them feel comfortable, and help them build just that network that they need to help them socially as well as academically in the school setting. Then, after that, we're going to meet with everyone from the district and just kind of open it up. And this is where the parents are going to lead this. I'm only going to be present every so often because I want them to have time to be able to express themselves freely because sometimes when administration is there, they're not as open or as comfortable as they want to be. But I want to be available for any questions, comments, anything that they need help with, and I want to be there for them. So, this is just one aspect of it. And you can kind of see, we've already gone ahead and set meetings for the rest of the year. Last year, we only, so I'm really excited to already have these on the calendar. Last year, we only- so, I'm really excited to already have these on the calendar. And then, in addition to that, hold, see.
There you go.
Okay. In addition to that, we are having one formal training session, November 7th. Wow, that looks totally different than- there it goes. Okay? And then, on November 7th, we're actually bringing in trainers that have worked with our staff, November 6th. Thank you. Our training is November 6th and 7th, so thank you. November 6th in the evening, we're going to do a parent night where we're actually bringing in speakers to talk to families and to give them strategies that will help them at home. So, we're kind of trying to balance that bringing in the speakers and the services they need in the community with giving them that time to really network amongst themselves. So, this, I'm really excited about. It's a big step for us. Like I said, last year, we only had two. And this year, we have several on the calendar. And Mrs. Frick with her key club is actually providing childcare. So, that is a great component. We appreciate the support from the high school for that. Okay, am I going to get back to it? Okay. The next thing I have is, last year, Christine Lennon, our special education coordinator at the high school, all year, she kept just advocating for our students in need of transition services. We do a fabulous job with them while they're here in the high school, but we worry about what happens with life after high school. So, as we would go to different conferences and workshops, we kept trying to figure out who does it best, who can we tap into, what other supports and services are there for our kids. Well, then she introduced me to Skylar Tierney. And I'm going to have him present tonight, because his passion for children is contagious, and I can't do it any better than he can. But he created a program in town at the No Vocational Training Center, which we are fortunate enough to send eight of our students there. There are 13 students there total in either Ball Chatham. I have such fabulous feedback from parents, from the students. We've been out there to visit several times. It is just so exciting to see our kids carry those skills that they learned at school into a community setting. So, Skylar, I'm going to go ahead and have you talk. While Skylar presents, I'm going to go ahead and put some pictures up that Betsy took for us last week earlier.
Sure, thank you. I'm here most- more than anything else, just to say thank you, guys. It's exciting to know and exciting to hear with all the advocates and all the things the school districts doing, that you guys are still buying into students with disabilities and you still believe in the causes of students with disabilities. And I believe that a lot of that is because of many people, but two of them is, let's listen to Jen Barham and Christine Lennon. So, if you would just give me one second, I have something for them, because with their vision and their direction and them, and then this partnership has allowed us to a lot of different doors, so. This is something that our students from Hope Institute made, and I wanted to present this to you. And then this one is for Christine Lennon.
That's beautiful. Very nice.
So, everything that we do with vocational department at Hope and now the No Vocational Center is around work. And we want to provide working opportunities for all people with disabilities, whether high, high, or high load their functioning is. And our motto is, is simple. We try to think outside the box, and we simply just try to provide opportunities. So, there's- obviously, I wanted to show you those art pictures because of our appreciation. But I also wanted to show you those, because this is a project that we're going to do at the No Vocational Training Center. We're going to call it the work of our program. I have not discussed this review quite yet, but the students, yeah.
I'll have to say no, but that would be.
Yeah, yeah, I got you, I know.
Yeah.
The students at the No Vocational Training Center, your guys, the students at Chatham, are going to help build those canvases. So, it'll be an exciting program and an exciting opportunity for our students. I just wanted to touch base and just basically tell you what a day in life is for your students that are coming to the No Vocational Training Center. First is about the building. The No Vocational Training Center, for those who have been around Springfield and the Chatham and Central Illinois area, was the old doctor's hospital. So, now, it's right off of Toronto Road. It's right off the interstate. You can see it from the interstate. That is now called the Noel Medical Pavilion. And the purpose of the Noel Medical Pavilion was to provide medical services for people with disabilities. So, we have a dental clinic there. We have lots of different facilities there. Gailey Eye Clinic was housed there, and now they've built a new building on the west side of town. And so, there was almost 6,000 square feet of just vacant room in that building. So, as that room was vacant, Christine and Jen both talked to me about how they want to provide quality services. And they always are looking to push more and push further and look for better services. So, that building's set empty. We submitted a proposal to our administration and say, let's develop this No Vocational Training Center for not Hope youth, not Chatham youth, but all students in central Illinois to come together and meet the needs of our population of students. Our administration, without batting an eye, and to my surprise, said yes, let's do it and let's get it done. So, some of the things that we do at the Vocational Center. Obviously, we have our Noel Cafe. It's downstairs. It's where the pharmacy was. And now, it's- it was a vacant area as well, because Noel Medical Services really wanted to just have that empty area with a drive-through. So, we have our own drive-through. Our students work there. If you come there on Tuesdays or Thursdays, you'll see your own youth working the cafe. Now, on top of that, upstairs is our goal, we call it the No Vocational Training Center. Again, so eight of the Chatham students attend there. We have a handful that come in the morning and then a handful that come in the afternoon. The purpose is just to provide vocational services. I lived in Waynesville. I've grown up in Waynesville. I will probably live in Waynesville my whole entire life. The reason why I got into this field is because of one student who was a friend of mine, who I met in the weight room when I was going through high school. And he did not have the services that Chatham provides. At the time, when he graduated school, you could job develop to the local village hall, and you could job develop to the local Casey's General Store. Outside of that, he had zero opportunities. So, our motto has been to just come to the No Vocational Training Center. The city bus system comes right by it. We'll provide the job coaching services, and we'll provide the job development services, and we'll get these youth out to the community to the best of our ability. And it's working. Today, honestly, actually, is the first day of one of the Chatham students worked. And he worked with our department. We supplied the transportation. We provided the job coaching services. And the young student took a job at Wendy's. It was outstanding. So, if you go to Wendy's now and the Noel Cafe, you'll see your Chatham youth working Monday through Friday at Wendy's from 9:00 to 11:00. And they're making minimum wage competitively important. So, it's exciting to know that. This whole system is a work in progress. I told you I could talk for hours. I promise I will talk for hours. The other component about this is, we want to establish our own businesses for our students to run. We have a dynamic population at times that's not ready to be out to the community just yet. So, our motto is, is let's provide some in-house businesses, such as the Noel Cafe. We've only operated our own Noel Cafe now for two and a half years. The next thing is, is we have all the equipment in for a coffee center business. And our coffee center business will be up and running by Christmas break. The next option that we're looking at is the work of our program and getting that on, up and going. We make doggy delights. Our students, your students, are all making dog treats and dog biscuits. A, because we want to teach those kitchen skills and those life skills, but not do it all with the fun stuff and the brownies and cookies and that sort of stuff, so. Because I'm there, and then I have to turn down brownies and cookies for you when I have them. It's not good, so. We do doggy delights, and we also do the fun things. So, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, we're typically there on campus. Tuesdays and Thursdays, we're out and about throughout Springfield. We've been to Walmart. We've been to the mall. We've been to the APL here recently and picked up school supplies and those sort of things, so. My principal, who has been in education for 37 years, he always reminds me how far special education has come. 30 years ago, students with special needs weren't allowed to even attend the same PE classes everybody else was. And if you think about how far we've come, especially with you guys now providing services for students outside of Chatham, it's exciting. And I want to leave this note with you guys, is the mission that you see when you first walk into this vocational training center is what would you attempt to do if you knew you could not fail? And it's a saying that's said on my desk for years. And now, all of a sudden, I think we're trying to implement it, and it's moving in the right direction. So, it's exciting to know where we've come in 30 years, and it'll be even more exciting to know that we will have 30 years from now. And a personal rule of mine is, I want every business in Springfield and Chatham to hire one student with a disability and look and realize how, not only the quality services that the student can provide, but how much it can change a business in just allowing our youth to attend, so. Any questions you guys have for me at all?
Skylar, we met, we sat at the same table at Celebrity Chef a few weeks ago.
Yeah, okay.
And I just want to say thank you for what you're doing. And you're also employed at Chatham Grad as your cafe manager. So, tell us the hours of the cafe.
We are typically there by 7:15, and we're open from 7:15 to 2:00.
So, in other words, on our way into Springfield, we can swing by and get a cup of coffee?
That's daily.
And Monday through Friday, when school's in session.
And actually, the treats that you had tonight were from the Noel Cafe.
They were very, yes, they were very good.
They're very good.
Pick up some dog treats.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Honorable, thank you.
Next item we have is a pre-K update.
I'm trying to close that one.
Oh, no. Just do the red X.
Yeah. Well, tonight, I've asked Mr. Viola, the ball elementary principal, to talk with you and just kind of update you on pre-K. Joe and I worked a lot this summer and talked about how we need to intensify the services and supports for our earliest learners to enhance the PD, the professional development. And I need to, as you tell me how to do this, I'll just, um, let's defend them.
Just need to strike it a little bit.
It's not showing up. There you go. I'll do it just for that one. And to connect families. So, we know that once our infrastructure is in place, that these students will be going to the other two elementary. So, we are hoping that we have everything accomplished by that, and it's a smooth transition back to the home schools. So, Joe's going to talk to you about numbers, personnel, curriculum, professional development, and the parenting part.
Starting off with current numbers of our pre-K program. We are currently at 123 students in our pre-K. You know, last year in spring, after spring screening, we had 15 students on the waiting list to find out if they'd be in pending results after fall screening. They were able to offer all 15 of those waiting list families a spot in pre-K. 12 of them accepted. Three of them actually turned down spots due to other reasons, such as finding other services or job schedules for parents. So, we do have 123 students in the program right now. Throughout the year, we'll probably have a couple more students and then who come to us from early adventure as well. As Joe had mentioned, some of the personnel changes. Our pre-K team is a very young group of teachers in terms of years in education. The most senior member of our pre-K team, this is her fourth year. With a fourth year, a third year, a second year, and two first-year teachers in the program, which has really been a great opportunity for us, to be able to model and build this pre-K program into what we hope it can become. And it really is an ongoing work in progress, trying to put things in place to consistently try to get better in the services we're providing our earliest learners. And one of the things that we've done this summer is, I put together a binder for all the pre-K teachers that had some professional development tools, some things I've found online, some of the curriculum items, the alignment of our creative curriculum, which is what we use in pre-K, to the Common Core standards, knowing that we're moving eventually to Common Core. Wanted to put that in the hands of the pre-K teachers as well. And with some of that, we improved some of the instructional time. And the goal last year moving into this year was to put more structure in place, knowing that it is a largely at-risk program. So, then we broke the whole group block of time, which is a 40-minute block of time, into two 20-minute sessions. And we also broke student choice, which is 70 total days, into two 35-minute chunks of time as well. And the feedback so far is that especially for the whole group time, that things are going so much better, because they have obviously shorter attention spans when they're talking three, four, or five minutes. And that they've really been able to hone in on that attention in that minute and work in the shared ingredient and the read-alikes and that whole group instruction and handwriting in there as well. So, the feedback has been pretty good. Student choice breaking that time up has been a work in progress, because now we've doubled the transitions. But I feel that's a skill that the teachers are working with the students on also. And small, small, small group time, small 30-minute block of time that teachers have typically brought back down into three small groups of the located groups and the time that each group is. And our gross motor, or some of the gross motor activities you can see from that picture. And then the top picture is letting in his crew came out and sprayed images, lines out back at ball, because some of the professional development we've provided in-house through our OT and PT were going over some of the age-appropriate skills, such as throwing a ball to a partner who's five feet apart. If it's an older student who's 10 feet apart, and being able to bounce a ball off the wall and have it come back to you eventually. Really, with some of the in-house professional development, trying to increase those opportunities. And with that gross motor time, which is a 30-minute block of time, we designated that part of that is teacher-led activities that go along with the curriculum and provide additional pieces of structure. Some of the other professional development that we've done this year besides the in-house with OT and PT, which has been, we're going through some wonderful activity in the district, is that myself, our instructional coach, and the entire pre-K team of teachers went to Wilmington a couple of weeks ago to participate in the Second Annual Kindergarten Readiness Round robin, and really brought back some great ideas that the teachers are already putting into place in their classes as far as music and movement and some other activities. Upcoming, there's an ECHRS training, which is the Early Childhood Rating Scale, which is part of the ISB's pre-K audit. So, we're going to send the whole team and myself to that, which is a free training locally in Springfield, so that we're all familiar with that tool also. Sending our two newest members to a creative curriculum training up in. I think that one's actually been moved up to the Chicago suburbs. And we've had a lot of, besides OT, PT, internal work with the literacy coach, our speech-language pathologists[1655.12] our speech-language pathologists are now getting into the classrooms and providing lessons, language lessons in the classroom. I know one of them started calling well, is Florida, right? Sort of our speech-language pathologist has been in there providing language lessons to the classes, which has been a wonderful resource. So we are participating in the kindergarten readiness program, which is the combination through the Community Child Care Connection in Springfield. And some of the supports that they've been able to give us with more trainings for our staff and resources for parents and families. We do have a new parent coordinator working with us this year. Who's really her focus, besides learning our pre-K program, has been to work with the parents, especially of our at-risk families. And we have some families, obviously it's an at-risk program, but some who have some other struggles going on. She's really been able to reach out and lending over those families to provide support to make sure that their children are getting to school and provided with food if they need food and to provide those things that, you know, all of our students should be able to benefit from.
And then the last is, yeah, go ahead and talk about the pre-K co-op.
Okay, the pre-K co-op meets on a monthly basis. A couple of the shorter months and holiday months, they're not meeting. But regularly at the Chadon Public Library, the pre-K co-op is meeting. So I've been attending as well as our parent coordinator. And that's really to foster, as we've listened to some of the other presentations tonight, bringing in the parents and providing resources. And right now, my focus has been high on butterbread fundraiser that's in place. Hopefully get those butter breads to people's hands before the holiday season kicks in. And one of the things that they've been able to bring us with some of their fundraising money is our pre-K teachers haven't had document cameras in their classrooms. And to each of their fundraising efforts and working with Chad to find out what we have that's compatible, they have decided to help out. One of their needs was to bring those document cameras into the classrooms. So they've gone ahead and decided that they would love to do that, especially because it helps not only our technology, but our literacy goals in the district as well. And they continue to work with the needs and feedback from teachers as far as what additional things that they might need as well as to help out during the period nights. Speaking of period nights. We did have our Fall Family Fun Night last Thursday, which the focus was on Fall Family Fun. We had a couple of hens on pumpkins to get that texture, you know, that tactile feel of the pumpkins and scoop it up in the signs and playing with the seeds. The teachers had made some Play-Doh and the families were interacting with that with some tossing activities and giving a pumpkin cobbler of sorts. We had around seventy families and their students show up to that event, which is over half the families in our program, which is a wonderful term. And a lot of them brought other siblings who were in other grades as well. So it really was a remarkable event. I know in November, we have a language pre-K night. And in the spring, we'll have a literacy night also for our parents to continue to provide resources for our families as well.
So with that said, we have, we get about two hundred and twenty thousand dollars pre-K grant. So that helps fund some salaries and benefits and our parent coordinator and some transportation and restless supplies and professional development. So that's what we receive right now. Any questions? It's just, it's awesome to watch how that program is really coming.
Do we have any connections with outside pre-K and with other, something local?
Yeah, we keep them updated. Joe just sent a letter because we went to a new handwriting program. And we just sent a letter to all of the, our P D, childcare services and providers and just about updating them on the curriculum aspects. And that, you know, and some resources, a website to go to for that. So we try to keep in touch with them. It's just awesome. Staff does an excellent job.
It's been wonderful this year, so thank you for continuing to support our pre-K program.
John's mentioned this before, but it's outstanding that all applicants have been served through your program and no one had to be turned away. So that's some growth.
Yes, well, what we definitely want to do is then with our at-risk families and the families that need their qualifications to get in, that wouldn't have, just to clarify, there are students who go through this screening process who don't show any delays. And those are students that we aren't able to hold responsibility. But in terms of at-risk families, if you have the requirements, all of that sort of is remarkable.
Anything else? Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
So.
Next is our teacher evaluation changes. Forty-six slides I saw?
I'm not going to show you all forty. I mean, I'm going to run through this. Tomorrow I get to, tomorrow, Wednesday, I'm going to talk to all of the teachers. We have a half-day shift day tomorrow, so I'm going to talk to four girls tomorrow and two on Wednesday. There's a lot of changes. The landscape of education is changing. And so these are just a few reform changes on this slide. And there's probably a lot more, but I just listed a few. And this is impacting all of us in this room. And really, one of the speakers that I've listened to, and he's right into what Jen says, that every student deserves effective teachers and leaders in their buildings. So we need to talk about teacher and leader effectiveness. So that's the whole purpose of this. So I'm going to, that's my intro. I want to talk, and I'm going to go into this real quick. There's a lot more, but I'm going to just briefly give you the very fast version. The state of Illinois is going to three certificates, so this is all new stuff. And the rollout date was supposed to be February one. It has changed, it's now June first. And so they'll be from sixty licenses to three in the state of Illinois. Everything that we currently have on our license is supposed to go over. You'll see that the certificates will include grade spans and grade levels next to exactly what you can teach. So that'll be something new. And then we're going to talk about teacher evaluation. There's several changes. And I want to remind you that our changes for our district right now will not take place until 2016. So I'm going to probably say 2016 several times tomorrow, so they'll relax. Once again, we talk in code, so I try to define that because we have to do that. I'm going to talk to the teachers a little bit about the evaluation training and what their principals did over the summer that consumed them. But they did it very well. And then we're going to talk about that this is one change that we do have to implement, and we have, that we will go to four overall categories for the teacher evaluation tool. And then, this is where we come into 2016 implementation. So there is a list that has been produced and we do have an evaluation committee as a district. And so there are union reps and administrative reps at the table. And they received a lot of this information then. And a whole list of schools that are going to have to implement it sooner than us. And that's pretty important because at a conference, I was able to network and say, hey, I know you're on that list. Can I come and visit? And so they very much said, please come. A lot of those schools that you see that are having to implement ahead of time have a lot of money behind them because they're, they're getting, you know, thirty-nine point four million to implement in six districts. And I just read that on Chris Cook's update, you know, thirty-nine point four million. You can do a lot with thirty-nine point four million. But unfortunately, we're not going to get that money at Ball Chadon because our implementation, we're not an at-risk school. So we're going to learn from others is the goal. So we're going to keep learning what everyone else is doing. So what will it look like in the year 2016? It'll be seventy percent will be based on the professional practices and thirty percent will be based on student. There are major differences between tenured and non-tenured. This is all new stuff. So they differentiate it by tenure, proficient, excellent. But these are the requirements. And then they go to needs improvement. And you'll see that that category warrants more observations. And it also requires a professional development plan, a PDP. There is no minimum or maximum timeframe, so that's something new. It's not a remediation plan, it's a professional development plan. And then the unsatisfactory, there's not a lot of changes. It talks about just the timelines and everything that we do currently. If the teacher is marked unsatisfactory. Then the other significant change is going to be years one through three, non-tenured, and year four. They also, it's some major changes again. Those look very similar until you get to this page. And at the very end, you have, you're eligible for early tenure if you're rated excellent during the first three years. And it talks specifically about what rating they have to have in order to earn tenure. Then we talk about evaluation process and how we've done all of that here. There will be a slight change in the pre-observation conference because they do want to have those lesson plans written and very detailed. So they're, you can actually discuss the actual what they're going to be doing when we walk in there. Sometimes that's hard to do if you have a pre-observation conference a week before you're going to go in and evaluate. So it's going to be all, it's going to be a lesson study too. So that will be a change. The state has a minimum requirement for formal by minutes. They talk about documentation, post-conference, and that's stuff that we do. They also have a lot of information about joint committees. And there will be some changes with the RIF joint committees. We will no longer be riffing by seniority. It'll be based on performance. And then we also have an evaluation joint committee. And this is the committee that's going to decide how much, you know, what are we going to use to measure student growth? All teachers have to have job descriptions. It can't be a generic job description, it has to be very specific. And so we have a hundred and eighty days. So we can have as many informal conversations, but the clock starts ticking when we formalize things. They also are going to take into consideration, this committee, about student characteristics. And how do you count special ELL, low income? If a kid moves in and out, the answer to that is they have to have at least two data points if you have a student growth in a district. I define assessment and student growth. And we talk about the types of assessment, type one, two, and three. And so as a district, we have to have two types. We either have to have one type of type one or two, and then one of type three. And the joint committee decides all of that. And then it defines what a type one assessment is. And this is beyond Illinois, this is standardized, and these are examples. Type two is district-wide, so there'll be common assessments. Type three will be classroom-based. And it's interesting when I listen to speakers because some people would assume that you would show a lot of student growth if you teach an AP class or an honors track. However, they caution, those are harder to show student growth. So that's going to be discussion with that committee about that. Then the issue is going to be this. How do you, how do we evaluate the performance on student growth for a librarian or a school counselor or a literacy coach? And that is yet to be determined. Some of the information we received in training is that they could rely on, you know, what a fifth-grade teacher, that student growth of that fifth-grade classroom. But there's still a lot up in the air, so that's yet to be determined. If for some reason our joint committee would not agree, we would have to adopt the state model. But if we do that, it's fifty percent based on performance and fifty percent based on student growth instead of seventy percent. I think we'll caution to agree on that. So we're going to talk about our evaluation committee and what we need to do and how we need to work backwards. We'll continue to have those informal conversations. I think we need to continue to talk about doing, piloting some of those common assessments and at the building levels. And I gave you references. And then I want to shift gears. So this is a little bit different. So this is another change in the law. And it takes effect right away. So there's going to be a five essential survey. And we're going to talk, there's a lot of training that goes into this, but this is just part of the new school report card for the state of Illinois. So in the fall of 2013, there'll be a new school report card. And it's going to measure what teachers and grade six through twelve students say on a survey. It's an online survey and that, there'll be an optional parent component to that. So the state of Illinois will fund it for three years. We asked that question on the webinar. It's only a three-year so far. The University of Chicago came up with this and they have twenty years of research. And really, this survey is about the five essential supports of school improvement. So the questions are all based on these five essential supports. And if you remember, and I didn't remember this, but in 2006, you read the Chicago trip. It talked about, you know, out of one out of, or six out of the one hundred in Chicago public schools will receive a college degree. This is where a lot of this came into play. And really, it's about seven point, you know, five. So seven and a half kids receive a college degree. It's based on this book, and I just received it. I need to read it, it's a little heavy reading already, I can tell you that. But they, they talk about why this is so important and how they came up with those five essential supports. They say that if you look back at these five, if we at least have three of these in our schools, that we are ten times more likely to make substantial gains in leading a map. And I think we would probably all agree with that. So the survey will take place February one through March thirty-first. The administration is not allowed, nor district office administration is allowed to take the survey. It's just based on teachers, no, no support staff, that was one of my questions. Teachers and grade six through twelve, it's online, takes about fifteen to twenty minutes. They will score it. The principals and the district office will receive the results in June. And then it will be reported to the public on the new state report card. Now, here are some example questions. So you can see that, and I just picked five. So you can look at those sample questions. Any questions?
Is it survey just of teachers? Teachers and students?
Teachers and students. Grade six through twelve.
They do that in class or they do that?
Yeah, we'll have to set it up where they can go in their computer lab and take it. That'll, that'll be, we'll just have to figure out.
When you get a report back, will it separate the teachers' information from the students?
And I will say that when they report out, it's beautiful to see, and I've got just a quick handout. I can just pass down the talks about how they report things out because everything's covered. So I can pass this around.
Jill, you said that Chicago public schools are getting thirty-nine point something million dollars?
Oh, that was one of them. I mean, that's, there's a lot of money funding a lot of these initiatives for schools that are in need. They're part of that school improvement process.
So who's providing this funding, the federal government?
A lot of the race to the top. It's all race to the top. And I will say that this survey is, we are one of the first states to do it. We are one of the, we are the first state to do it statewide. You'll find schools in Boston, Detroit, Minneapolis that have done it at a larger scale and some small schools. But never statewide, never. So Illinois is the first.
Jill, is it all, all teachers being surveyed in those classes and all students?
Sixth grade, grade six through twelve. All teachers will take it in the district, including K, pre-K through twelve. But it'll be just six through twelve students. It doesn't feel like the elementary students could handle an online survey. And if you would want more information, these are some excellent websites to go to. Questions? That's just one of my favorite quotes. So a lot of things are changing. Any questions?
Anything else?
You doing technology?
Technology, industrial technology.
One more thing, sorry. Technology-wise, we have some exciting things going on in technology. Bob and Tammy, Tammy Hillby and Bob Cox, who are our instructional technology support people, are working through the iPad applications. The principals have been nice enough to utilize their PTO funds to buy technology for classrooms. The foundation just spent, just provided GIS a grant for BYOD. We are looking into that one-on-one technology. And I know that Chad and Bob went up to Bloomingdale, Illinois, to a conference. And we will be going to Rochester as a team. The team of us will be going to Rochester the first week in November to look at it. So I can tell you that our teachers are very excited about using the iPad and Apple TVs in our classrooms. There were over thirty teachers that went through the iPad class this, this summer. And it's back by popular demand. And so the first one starts tomorrow night and they will meet for almost twenty hours. And they have twenty-two teachers already signed up. And it went very fast. The other exciting news, I'm very, very happy about this, last week, we offered a community iPad class. And we had twenty-nine out of thirty people come. And it was just awesome just to watch. Everyone brought their iPad and Bob and Tammy showed them things along with Tammy Meyer and Lindsay Fesser, who are the BYOD teachers that GIS teach fifth grade. They spent three hours doing that community class. And it was just awesome. And the second community class, I'll be going to the fourteen. And I wish I could tell you that you can sign up, but it's full already. So it's exciting. Questions?
I have one on just overall on technology. It's been an update. How's everything working in all the, all the classrooms? Are all the connectivity, the boards working?
A little bit better in some buildings and not. I mean, we are still trying to figure out why the active boards aren't working with Cifrix. So we're still working with that company. I mean, check calls a moment on a daily basis. I mean, check calls a moment on a daily basis. They, he actually sent the component to them, and they've got their tech people looking at it. So, we're still researching.
Anything else? Thanks. Right, onto our financials, our education fund balance report.
Patrick? I know that you've been staring at this for the last five minutes.
Well, we have to break out ahead of time.
This is just a reminder that in your board policy, which is already out there, that the board has set a level for the fund balances to be in the ten to fifteen percent range of annual expenditures in each fund. So, knowing that is a, has been a set goal of the board. I want to go through a few other items with you at this time. I'll actually start. You can see the other months are here now that we have an improved budget. I was able to go back and recalculate your July, August, and current September month-ending expenditures and revenues. So, I'll just go through the September one, and the other ones are there for your review. And on the expense side, and this is that newer format that we reduced last year. And just to give you an indication of where we're at, expenses, we're about a quarter of the way. We are a quarter of the way through the school year. And just in the ed fund, just as an overall, you see the total for the ed fund right here. You know, we're running right at about the time, you know, the expenses are in alignment with the timing that it is for the year. And so, that's pretty consistent for all of our expenses. They're pretty much in line with the timing of the year. So, at this point, I don't have anything that stands out to report to you on that. So, I'll just keep moving, unless you've got some specific questions on that. And then, quickly on the revenues, and I lost it. These numbers will look a little more ahead. As you may recall from other presentations that I've given, it's typical for us to get a majority of our revenues between the summer months, and then we go along for a time without receiving some revenues, because the levies have already been paid. And we just get sort of standard, like, general state aid, which is smaller in comparison to the levies and stuff. So, it's typical that we would receive the majority of our revenues for this time of the year, and then again, later, later in the year. There's different times of the year when we're going to get our revenues. So, we're a little ahead right now on the revenues, which is good. It means there's some money there right now to, to cover some expenses. Got nothing to worry about for the first one. But just to let you know, those reports are there, and they're now current. One of the things we wanted to talk to you about today was to give you a projection, or to show you specifically in the ed fund, what's been occurring in the district with your budget. And this is just to show going back FY seven. You see the FY numbers right through, sort of, the higher part of the chart. It's FY seven, eight, nine, through thirteen, with your budgets. These are your approved budgets. But in FY seven and eight, you had an approved budget that showed a surplus. So, you were approving, you were going to spend less than you were receiving in those years. So, these are based on your board-approved budgets during that time. And in FY nine, began the deficit spending. And that's when you were potentially spending reserves, in this case, to prepare to build a new school and make some other expenses at that time. But it shows the, the trend that has still been a deficit spending for several years. And that while we certainly are trending up with the most recent budget, the one you just approved last month, getting us back up towards an even, or even a surplus status, we need to keep moving in that direction. So, it's been several years that we've been operating in a deficit budget that have been approved. And that's okay, because you had some reserves. But we, I'll show you here in a second how we really don't have those reserves anymore. And then, these were the projected fund balances. Actually, these are the fund balances from the actual AFRs for the years that they're available. And again, going through FY seven and FY eight, just under twenty-two million that we had in the bank at that time. And we're projecting at the end of this year with the current budget that you approved to have about three million. This puts those two charts together. The blue shows the fund balances, so you can see again FY seven and eight, where the significant balance was, how we've been trending down. Obviously, in those fund balances, just in the ed fund. Red line shows the budget, the amounts that you approved to have a budget. So, if it's above that zero line, of course, that was a surplus year. You were expecting to have more revenues than expenses. And if it's below that line, then that was the deficit spending years. This takes the operating funds, the ed fund, the O and M fund, the transportation fund, together, and just gives you an indication. So, your blue lines, first you had fund, purple line's your O and M fund, and green line's transportation fund. And the red line represents that fund balance of that ten percent of expenses that you have in board policy, where we've been hovering around on that. And so, while the transportation line has been able to grow, which is a good thing, because I have a feeling that the state may eventually stop paying transportation reimbursement. Ed fund has clearly been down, and in fact, this year is even below that line. So, we're actually below your set target of ten to fifteen percent minimum for this year's expenses. So, we're already below where you would like us to be, and we need to get back above that. Questions on that?
Well, and then we have to go back to, you know, a decision that the board made to use cash reserves to build Glenwood Elementary, even knowing that at this point, we'd have to go to referendum to build it as large as it needed to be. So, it was a conscious decision on the board to spend on a significant chunk of reserves. So, I, I wouldn't want anybody to think that you should always have thirty million dollars in reserves, and, because that money is to be spent for education of the kids, you know. So, and as we are now dealing with the state, which we certainly didn't anticipate three years ago when we made that decision, we would've never realized that today we'd be sitting here with a state that doesn't pay its bills in any kind of a timely or full manner. So, the fact that we do have some reserves is still a good thing. But the goal is, at this point, to realize that we can't spend, spend down all of those reserves, because we have no idea, no expectation the state's going to improve itself the next few years. Is that?
Yes.
Okay. Summarizing.
Said it very well.
Would, would it be possible to, on the financial report, to, to put a fund balance percentage on there? Our goal is ten percent. Current fund balance is nine percent. Should kind of let us see each month where, where we are in relationship to our.
You can. I fear that it's a little misleading, because as we said, we'll receive revenues now. And then, those are really to cover us for the costs for the year. And so, it's a little misleading to, I mean, but we certainly can show you, you know, where your fund balances are.
Or, maybe your projected year-ending fund balance.
Right, anticipated.
Well, this is using that number.
Right.
This is based on your budget, you approved last month, this is where you would fall.
Then each month, we could have a snapshot, and we'd kind of see, okay, this is. Well, again, the trouble is month to month.
While your expenses are fairly consistent, your revenues are not. And, you know, we only get revenues a couple of times a year. And so, as you already saw, we're already thirty-five, forty percent into our revenues here in a year. We're only twenty-five percent where we're spending. So, it's a little misleading to do it a month by month, as opposed to the whole year of one plan. To say, this is where, after all expenses are done, after all revenues are in, this is where we're projected to be. It's a little more, comparing apples to apples, if you will.
And Patrick, can you, I know that the ed fund is our largest fund, but percentage-wise, if you compare the ed fund to O and M and to transportation, it just is, can you just refresh our?
On that bar graph, I'd suggest you make the width of the bars.
No, proportional.
But you know, the height, but the width of the bars proportional to the, you see what I'm saying, Patrick?
Right, if you can see here, you're budgeted, just from the ed fund, was thirty-four million dollar total, ed fund, whereas in the O and M, it was three point six. So, that already gets the numbers you're asking about. They're right, they're right here. And transportation is similar. We're actually about two point three. So, it's the smallest of three. O and M, clearly, education, clearly, the larger of three.
Salaries and benefits.
So, that seventy-one percent ratio, I guess, fund balance to expenses really is a sm, much smaller number than what we currently have in, in our, than that nine percent is. That nine percent is more dollars than that seventy-one percent.
Right.
It's at that fund, it's at the ten percent of that fund's expenses.
Sure.
Maybe make that, like, a three-dimensional bar graph, to make the volume under. I'm just saying.
Right, yeah.
Excel could do that.
Because, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Sure.
I don't know how to do that, but.
Because it makes it look like all you need to do is shift your money.
Shift your, yeah, yeah.
Transport to the other one.
Which A, you can't do, but B, yeah.
Well, the other thing I'd point out.
It's this much compared to this much, yeah.
Our policy is for each specific fund. And I'll point out, while we're not meeting our policy on the other two funds, we're way above our policy. So, you know, that will be another thing for this board to consider.
Well, the policy doesn't say, spend it down, you know what I mean? That you want to be, it's at the minimum, you know. And it's ten to fifteen percent too, and he's just talking about ten percent, showing ten percent up here.
Well, but, 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 again, the conversation.
It says no less than.
What, what do you want your policy, do you want your policy to be as big as you possibly can? Well, not necessarily.
Right.
Seeing what we've seen with general state aid, and expecting the general state aid to be reduced even again next year, and knowing that the pension shift is very likely to, to come and hit all districts, and knowing that, again, the transportation, or again, likely maybe another cost pushed on to the districts, gives us every, you know, reason that we need to have as much money and reserves as we possibly can. Because right now, it is very unknown what is coming, except some things coming.
In addition to that, Jill, all of those changes that you were talking, evaluation processes, are, there's going to be unfunded mandates to implement then? Or, well, it's only funding for three years, but that's it? So, increased in the number of unfunded mandates?
Quite possibly.
All in the ed fund, not in transportation? Unless they take our transportation away, which they probably will.
Right. I don't know when, but I think that was coming.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you, Patrick. On the new business, and I think you've got a financial update. Oh, no, this is for us.
Right, yeah. It's just a time that you could have some discussion about.
About this.
If you want to continue anything else.
Any further discussion about this? I know we've had some.
Well, I think we'd have to ask the administration if you're looking at cuts for next year. And I know we've looked mostly at cutting a lot of the stuff out of the budgets, kind of like, but then we haven't looked at personnel. May also have to look at personnel. And we talked about future student ratios already. I think we've, we've expanded them marginally in our younger grades. But then, we also have to look at administrative positions in the schools, too. I'd ask that we at least look at options.
I think the thing we need to remember is that we, you know, we did allow the administration to increase by one or two students, class sizes in the elementary. But personally, I don't want to see any reductions to our kids in the classroom as far as, you know, direct instructional.
Because the bulk of those expenses in the educational fund, their salaries and that, we all know that. So, that's going to be the heartache, I think, in the coming years, especially if the state continues.
And we've got some tough decisions ahead of us.
Certainly do.
The drive has to continue to be toward a balanced budget.
It'd be nice to be able to get to that, what that deficit is this year, and kind of get down to that level, or even below that level.
Well, I've said this before, it's not, not our local taxpayers.
No, it's not.
It's the state of Illinois.
Any other comments or questions?
I appreciate your guidance.
All right, eleven-two, approve the GHS yearbook members. Been sitting around for a long time, listening to this totally interesting meeting here about finances and all. Approve, you guys want to go out to attend a convention out in, out in San Francisco? Is there somebody that wants to give the, talk about what you want to do, and why you're going to do it, and how it's going to help?
I feel it better be written down.
We'll put them on the spot.
I find it hard to believe that high school students want to talk about this.
They're Texas.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, we were wanting approval of being excused from school Thursday, April twenty-fifth, and Friday, April twenty-sixth. This is a self-funded trip, and nothing from the school would be needed from us. There's going to be a ton of college scouts there. And I know all four of us, the ones going, including our advisor, are thinking about going into either marketing or design, something along the lines of this convention that we'll be going to. Also, California is one of the top three states for yearbooks and design. So, when we go, we'll be able to see a lot of examples and bring it back to the rest of our staff members, because we're the editors of this year's yearbook. So, I think it would be really beneficial for all of us to be able to attend this convention.
Would you tell us your names?
I'm Hannah Engelking.
I'm Jessica Clark.
Can you tell us what this convention is?
It's a journalism convention, and there'll be different yearbooks there, and writing classes and marketing classes. They'll all help benefit our yearbook.
And this is being held in April now. I certainly know that some of you are juniors, or all of you juniors? So, you're going to be able to use this?
No, three of us are.
Yeah, it would be, you'd be leaving the day after ACT. So, I know that was like a big concern, though, that already taken, so.
ACT is Tuesday the twenty-third, and Wednesday the twenty-fourth. In fact, Thursday is a leave-a-half, a major, so it'll actually be one and a half days.
I guess my question was, will you all be returning to the yearbook staff next year?
Yes.
To put your.
Except for a courtship.
Any other questions, comments?
Get your homework done ahead of time.
Got to make sure you're not sick on ACT, didn't you?
Okay, anything else you want to say? It about does it? Okay.
Shepherds, or just Mrs. Kahler, right? Are you, any parents going? Okay. Yeah, no, I just was curious.
I was going to take my son as well. He's twenty-one, he went through, did the schools here, and did a particular study on himself, but I've been with him after the divorce, so, yeah.
Oh, sure. Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming and staying.
Any other comments? Need a motion then to approve the GHS yearbook staff members to attend a convention in San Francisco as presented this evening?
I'm moved to approve your trip. Good luck. Hope you learn a lot, bring back a lot.
Thank you, Linda, and a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Alan, and call the roll, please.
Carter.
Yes, Tom.
Yes.
Carly.
Yes.
Carter.
Yes.
Peter Mark.
Yes.
Weitzel.
Yes.
Yes. Good luck. Have fun.
And you can go if you want.
Have a safe trip, guys.
Our next item is our policy. Let's see here, five dot six oh. We have changes in this, Patrick? Is that what, okay.
There's two policies here, five sixty, and the administrative procedures that are associated with that. What's before you, and bold and underlined, is new text. The strikeout is text that we are looking to eliminate. This is very short-stated policy before, and we needed to add. There was some language that we needed to clear up, and so, when we were looking at it, just not here, another word there that we needed to look at. So, we want to look at the entire policy. We wanted to get some information in here that was reflective of the current administrative procedures and guidelines for reimbursement, both in district, job-related duties, as well as out of district, maybe attending a conference workshop related to staff reimbursement. And so, this outlined in clearer terms, the expectations, how reimbursement would occur, what would qualify for reimbursement, give it some language that administration could then explain and share to employees, be consistent for that. So, this first page is really just more general, provides the overall guidelines of what's reimbursable, what's the goal, purpose. There was some language in here that also said the board would annually review this rate. That was in old language with the BCEA. And after consulting with them, they also were in agreement that that language now didn't need to be there anymore. So, we ran it out, and sort of look and clean up more policies. So, this first one before you is really just more general guidelines, what I mainly submit for approval.
Any questions? And this has been reviewed with our policy committee, Dr. Quetter and Mr. Harland, so, okay. Then, uh, no question, need a motion then to approve, uh, or to adopt policy, revised policy.
This is just first reading.
I'm sorry.
As much as we would enjoy that.
Go ahead.
I guess we'd, I'd see a second time, the second one, um, is then administrative procedures that associate with that. The first document there is the original, the second one, this is what the language says now. So that's the non-changed version. We've got to see if we can go to the other one. This is, um, again, some cleanup language, this is really actually what started it. And it just clarifies, now that we have like a district vehicle, so we want to make sure that was in there, that we encourage in the use of the district fleet vehicle when and wherever possible for transportation, so we want to make sure that was in our policy. Comments about the receipts, then the parking here, we recognize that certainly twenty dollars a day may not cover parking in some cities. So allows for that to be increased with superintendent or does need approval. The main thing that we're doing here on the second page is putting into the board policies the actual dollar amounts that would be reimbursed. This is the most substantive change here. So it sets the dollar amount that would be reimbursed if approved for breakfast, lunch and dinner. These rates are consistent with what's going around throughout the state, well, northern, central and southern. Did a quick survey of some of my counterparts in other districts, and the data we got back showed that we were significantly higher at the current rate that we were approving. It wasn't forty dollars a day for dinner. And we were way high even for northern suburb districts. And so we wanted to bring that more into alignment and specify exactly the end policy, of course, you can change these anytime. We wanted to get it clear, this is what the board will authorize reimbursement. It's consistent with costs that other districts are providing their reimbursement for these areas as well. So I feel like we're very much in alignment with what other districts are doing throughout the state. That was the most substantive change in this one here, other than clarifying a few of the procedures.
And we talked about setting the fixed budget, but what kind of set, but the board was supposed to review them every year, but the whole part of that wasn't quite happening anyway, so it just. Patrick, it's a guess at the most reasonable thing, just spell it out, and if we need to increase it in the coming years, uh, just comes up to the board to increase.
Since we're opening the policy, everything was very genuine, the language that was getting consistent with the current administrative practice and made it consistent for those implemented.
And we also said that a lot of conferences include some of the, uh, students.
Any questions? Okay, thank. Next we go to communications, roundtable discussion, and we've reserved some time tonight if we want to discuss. On September eighteenth, we had Larry Dirks, who's a I A S B field rep that handles our district here. Tried to take us through a few things, and I just wanted to make, see if anybody had any, uh, anything we want to take a look at. He provided us a report, a written report on this and some things we needed to take a look at. And I think that that's something that, that we all feel we need to take a look at some of these, how we phrase things and the goals versus strategic objectives and that sort of thing, and kind of better define some of those, some of those things, so. Any other comments, questions, uh, feedback on that?
I certainly think we're at a point where we really need to, um, reestablish, um, district goals. And we've, the strategic plan, which was a plan and not a set of goals, um, is essentially, you know, hopefully with the passage of the upcoming referendum, it'll, it's time for us to, you know, to, uh, reestablish goals for, you know, board goals for the district. I'd like to see us go ahead and, and work through that with, with Larry's assistance, cause I think having a outside expert who can, uh, just kind of guide the discussion that we would have.
Right.
Really will yield the best result.
I think it's important that we're going to have to follow through, I see it's closing a loophole. We've got the whole district, the whole state, with all the districts working on new evaluation process that includes goal, goal planning and all that. And that, and we're supposed to have an aligned kind of process that matches them with the district goals, so we can match those up with the superintendent goals and the administrative goals and then the teaching goals. And yet, if we haven't spelled out the district goals in a way that the superintendent can use those to further the other side of things, then we're kind of, I think we're holding back part of the, the process on the other end of the administrative workings for the, for the other processes. So I think it's important that we kind of close that loophole, at least, at least spell it out now. And then, and then maybe consider down the road some further process to eventually update, or at least for the future boards, to what processes they would use to update the strategic plan altogether. But I think Larry kind of spelled out, we've got a missing hole, we're kind of in the middle of the process. And I think to use his help to, to, to accomplish that would be the wisest thing we could do.
And John, you did, you said it much better than I just said it, I, I think it's right, you know, using a broad di- uh, board goals for the district will help, um, direct the activities of the superintendent administration.
Well, and Lisa and I worked on that superintendent evaluation, and we're still missing that third part. And that was all predicated on us being able to lay out those goals, and we can't do that yet. We've got a new superintendent who's here. For the year, this year, there's not a lot to that evaluation, but coming years, the next year coming, how is that evaluation going to proceed if we're missing that third part of the evaluation process? And that can't be said until this board can, and I think we all have a, I think we all have general agreement on what, on what our goals really are for this district. But they have the, according to Larry, they need to be spelled out.
The district dashboard too, really needs to, you know, have those measurable goals.
Well, and I think that, that's where John and Rick and I, we've had such an issue with the dashboard, and that's because we hadn't, hadn't clarified goals in order to know what we should be included in the dashboard.
So then do we ask him to come back to a board meeting then and, and help facilitate that?
Sounds like great idea.
I think that's, that would be our next step, yes, to, to put that together and, and see if we can take it in small chunks instead of trying to take it, and take a big bite out of everything and try and do it all at one time is to, is to take it in phases and see if we can put it that way. We've also done, and as you were saying, John and Lisa, this dashboard, I get this stuff in email now about, about some different ways and different means of taking information and putting it into a meaningful dashboard and, you know, software out there that can help us do that. I don't know if we would do that in-house or internal, but, you know, there's different ways to put that together, but we, and again, with the evaluation process now, which is something that we need to take a look at and incorporate into that, we need to decide what that dashboard's going to look like before we can start plugging things in there to, um, to see if we're meeting the objectives that we've set for, so.
Well, um, I'd almost propose to be like, you know, a policy, we have a first reading of whatever this turns out to be, maybe with the help of Larry for one meeting, and then everybody gets to take that home for a month. And then the next meeting, we will come back and confirm it with a vote, and that way we could get some public input.
Public input, right.
In the meantime, over the course of the month. So I guess that would be, and that would be a conversation to have with Larry, whether or not he might come to our, or help, help work with you, Jim, and it would, to prepare something at the next board meeting that we all could discuss or, or something like that. And I, I would prefer it to be all, all of eight of us as a board, kind of having a discussion rather than just kind of a sub.
You could either do it, yeah, either as a subcommittee or as a retreat again, like we, you know, a follow-up retreat.
I'd rather sit with everybody.
Yeah, I'd rather do it with everybody, should be, as a committee of eight.
Right.
Sure.
Yeah, as a retreat, I mean, it could be just around the table as opposed to like this.
Right.
It could be another one of those many workshops, board work session, and then we, then we would have that as kind of a, not, not, maybe not a board policy, but presented as a first reading kind of thing.
That's a good idea.
One month and let everybody think about it along with the public input for another month, and then next month come back and go it on.
And if you wanted, you could put whatever comes from that out to a survey for parents to give input, or, you know, community members to give input to what you've designed. The library just recently did that, where they wanted to get input, Chatham Public Library, where they wanted to seek, you know, more input from community members. It's a good idea.
And then I see this as a kind of a growing process such that next summer at the annual kind of board administrative retreat, the new board, whatever board is sitting there at that time, would have the opportunity to decide if they needed to work on it further or adjust it or revise it, or, or again, decide if they wanted to have a more broader strategic retreat down the road.
Well, I will talk to Larry and see what we might go put together when he's available and, uh, and see what we can put together.
That's great.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
My pleasure. Anything else we had in the roundtable? I don't think there was. Okay. Back to the right spot. You had nothing?
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay. Uh, next item we have here is an opportunity for visitors to address the board concerning any topic. Does anybody wish to address the board tonight? Step up here to the podium. Couple things, if you could identify yourself, and if we could, uh, you know, try and stand at five minute timeframe, okay?
First of all, I'd like to thank the, you guys have given me the opportunity to address the board tonight. My name is Cheryl Ben, I have been with Ball Chatham School District for five years now as bus driver. I'm here tonight representing a group of Ball Chatham School District support staff, employees who do not wish to be involved in any way with the V C E S P A Union, particularly in light of recent incidents that bring into serious questions the tactics used by the union organizers towards our employees. While our group may be a little less than fifty percent of the support staff employees, there is a sizable number of us, and we believe that there are many more of our coworkers who do not want to be represented by the union, that they are afraid to speak up because they have personally been intimidated or know others who have been intimidated and fear retaliation from the union officers and the supporters. We respect everyone's right to unionize, but it is clear that those who participate in the union do not respect our rights to choose not to join the union and our right to work in a non-hostile work environment, free of threats, intimidation and false accusations filed with our superior. Some of our employees have been told by union organizers and officers that if they don't join the union, they, one, have no choice, they have to join, or otherwise they will no longer be able to work for Ball Chatham School District. They will not receive raises or other benefits of union members. One former driver had a threatening note left on his bus from another union member. One driver was stopped in a parking lot of a local gym and was told that they had to be a member of the union in order to continue working there. One aide at an elementary school was also told that she would have to join and pay dues even if she didn't want to. Another driver was told that if they don't want to be a member of the union, then they should just quit. I myself have also have some issues with the members of the union while trying to contact all eligible support staff via the inner office mail. Some of the union members took it upon themselves to confiscate the letters that I had addressed to employees. The union members carrying out this pattern of deception and intimidation have the N E A and the I E A to stand up for them. We are asking that you, the board of Ball Chatham School District, support those staff members who do not want to join the union. We know that union dues takes out a large por- portion of our paychecks. We hope that you will consider this fact and negotiate for those of us who do not need union representative to not be required to pay a fair share. We know that Ball Chatham School District is an excellent employer, and we have not to this point and don't fear that we will be treated unfairly by the school administration. Instead, we have come to fear the actions of the union selected to represent, support employees of Ball Chatham School District. We don't have the confidence in an organization that cannot control the actions of their members and that promised that they would have a contract in a matter of months. They haven't even been able to bring one before their members in twenty-two months. I sincerely appreciate their time, attention and understanding. The employees I have referenced, as well as many others, have legitimate concerns about the environment we work, now work in. We believe that you, the board of education and school administrators of Ball Chatham School District are our only source of support. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to address the board this evening? Okay. Then, uh, if there's nothing else from the board members or superintendent, then a, a motion to adjourn? So I have, John, thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, Stephen, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you.